We'll call our meeting to order. Thank you for joining us this evening, and with that, we'll go straight to roll call. Mr. Secretary.
Madam President, all Board members are present.
Wonderful. Next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd rise, we have Connor Buckley joining us from Clay Middle School, who's going to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
Thank you, Connor. First on our agenda, we have consent. May I have a motion to approve consent?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Next on our agenda, we have the replacement referendum, Dr. Wall.
Thank you. Follow-up to my presentation to the Board and recommendation at January 23rd, discussing and reviewing the facts regarding the replacement referendum and that recommendation. This evening, we're recommending to the Board of Education approve the resolution to hold a special election on May 2nd, 2017, for the replacement referendum.
Thank you, Dr. Wall. May I get a motion on the table to approve the resolution to hold a special election on May the 2nd?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Well, actually, I have a few things that I wanted to mention. First, I really appreciate all the work the district has done throughout the course of the past few months, sharing the ways the district has either had cost avoidance or cost savings. I appreciate that since you joined Carmel Fisk Schools in 2013, you have been an advocate for public education, and you've worked very closely with the Board as well as our legislators to try to secure additional funding to maintain our schools. And third, recognizing that state funding unfortunately has not taken a turn in the positive direction for our schools, and it has not dramatically improved. I appreciate how fiscally responsible the district has been in retiring some debt, knowing that we would need to have a replacement referendum. I think that is huge, as we look at the big picture, that although we still need funds, we don't have to ask for any additional funding. It will be, it will have a neutral effect on my taxes, so that I really appreciate.
Any other comments? Okay. All in favor of the resolution to have a referendum election on May the 2nd, 2017? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we have our workshop topic. Into that, we're turning to Dr. Dudley about the middle school STEM courses.
Great, thank you. Last year, in the 15-16 school year, we did a program evaluation and a program redesign of our tech ed courses for middle school, and we redesigned them into STEM courses. And so tonight, what we'd like to do is share with you some of the great things that are happening in our middle school STEM courses. And we have Mrs. Amanda Hoagland, who is the Supervisor of Learning. We have Mr. Derek Dow, who is the STEM teacher at Clay Middle School, and we have Connor Buckley, who is a 6th grade student at Clay Middle School, and they're going to share with you what is happening in our STEM courses. So I'll turn it over to Mrs. Hoagland.
Thank you for your patience as I put together our presentation for this evening and get that going on the screen, and thank you to the Board for having us this evening. We really appreciate the opportunity to share with you all the great things happening in our STEM courses at the middle school level. Again, I'm Amanda Hoagland, Supervisor of Learning, and we have a STEM teacher at each one of our middle schools. Sally Davidson is the STEM teacher at Carmel Middle. John Davis is the STEM teacher at Creekside, and Mr. Dial is the STEM teacher at Clay. And actually, I just received some really exciting news from Mr. Dial. He recently wrote a grant in order to attend the U.S. Space Camp in Huntsville, Alabama. So he'll be heading to that through that grant opportunity through Honeywell Educators this summer, and we're really excited about all of the learning experiences that he'll be able to bring back for us as he attends that program. So good luck to him. And then also, we have Connor Buckley, who is our star of our STEM program, one of many, and he's here tonight to share with you his project that he submitted into a contest called the GOTGrit Contest. So he'll be taking the floor in just a little while. But first, I just want to kind of give you an overview, as Dr. Dudley mentioned, an overview of our redesign for middle school engineering and technology. We're excited to present to you the story of two new classes, and at the 6th grade level, students can take STEM explorations, and in 7th and 8th grade, the class is called STEM Design and Innovation. So our research did in fact begin in 2015-2016, and in that school year, we began to compile and research engineering and technology education specific to middle school. Through this work, we did decide to compile a broad-based committee. We wanted to bring in a lot of different people to the table and just allow others to share their expertise with us. So on this committee, we invited a high school guidance counselor. We also had our high school engineering teacher. All three of our middle school teachers in the STEM program, who we mentioned earlier, they were on the committee, an Ivy Tech professor on the committee, and also a parent who's an engineer. So as you can see, that's really a great wealth of knowledge that we brought to the table to help in this work. Also, to aid in the work, we offered teachers some professional learning opportunities. We sent all three of the teachers downtown to Indianapolis to attend the HEP Conference. HEP Conference, that stands for Hoosier Educational Computer Coordinators. While they attended that training, they were able to go through some robotics workshops with Lego Mindstorm, and then they were also able to attend classes for technology integration. So that was a great way to bring in even more technology and engineering knowledge to the table. And then also, we attended the Ivy Tech Champions Breakfast, and while we were there, we were able to hear from a panel of people who work in the field, and they talked to all the people who attended the breakfast about the job skills that students need to have for the future. Also, within our work, we invited the Indiana Department of Education Program Leader in this area, and he came in to discuss with us the recurring trends in career and technical education. So there again, you can see all of the different ways in which we brought in a lot of different areas of expertise. In addition to that, we watched closely as they revised the Indiana State Standards for middle-level engineering and technology. We knew that they were up for revision, and we just really wanted to keep close tabs on what was happening with that, so that we could align our program with that as well. And what we saw was that implementation guidance from the state indicated that middle school programs such as this should introduce students to a wide variety of topics in order to prepare students for not only options that are offered at Carmel High School, but then also to introduce students to a variety of educational pathways that they may be interested in as they progress through the grades and beyond. As we continued our research, there were several key findings that came through, the first one being, as I mentioned earlier, workforce trends and needs. As we saw in the Champions Breakfast, we also heard of a publication by Indiana Workforce Development, and it was a pamphlet, and it was called the Hoosier Hot 50 Jobs. And through this pamphlet, we saw the 50 fast-growing highway, high-wage jobs of tomorrow for our state, and we took that as a piece of evidence, and a piece that we wanted to kind of bring in and really help to inform our decisions on this program moving forward. Besides those workforce trends and being in close connection with Ivy Tech, we also researched quite a bit and learned about the role of STEM in education. And you hear that words, that acronym STEM, and you hear STEAM all the time in education, but you know exactly what is it that we're looking for? And what we found was that in a STEM or STEAM program, we really look to having authentic learning experiences that integrate all those subject areas into the projects. Also important topic that was brought out in the research was literacy in technology education. We wanted to be able to provide students with opportunities to read, and to write, and to speak, and really talk to the academic vocabulary in this subject area. We wanted students to engage in the engineering design process, which you'll hear Connor talk all about that in just a few minutes. And then also, we found that there were a lot of underrepresented groups that were entering the STEM field. So in particular, we found that in the research to be for girls. So we really wanted to make sure that our program was going to appeal to more girls and bring more girls into the program, and since the rollout of our STEM classes, we've seen an increased number of enrollment for girls. So that's exciting data to share with you. So we took all of this research and all of those key findings that I've just explained to you, and we placed those into an evaluation tool, because there are a lot of programs and publishers out there, and we wanted to find the one that's the best fit for what we were looking for. So we took all those key findings, put them into an evaluation tool, and then we requested usernames and passwords for different companies that offer programs in this area. So teachers were able to go in and log in and see the student's side, and then use the evaluation tool to base their decisions and to provide feedback for us. As we did this, we found one company named Paxton Patterson. Paxton Patterson offered us a web-based digital content program where students can access the content both at home and at school online. It provided students with a lot of choices, where they could take the class multiple times in a nine weeks, so that they would not be repeating the content. It offered hands-on exploration in different design briefs that students would choose to complete as they went through the learning modules, and then also provided professional development for our teachers. All three of our teachers did in fact attend Paxton Patterson teacher training this summer in North Carolina. And as you see before you, you have a flyer out in front of you. This is the flyer that we use to advertise the courses. I think that is probably sitting at your table right, right before you. Great. And what this does is it provides families with some information about what the course entails, and so there are some frequently asked questions at the bottom, and then along the right-hand side, you can see all of those action labs, those hands-on learning opportunities that students can choose from. And usually, students will be able to go through one or two modules within the nine weeks. So just to give you some information about the types of activities that students will do when they choose one of these modules, I'll just give you a quick run-through, but really, the best way to experience these is through a video that we're going to show you next. And in fact, and you don't have to do this now, but if you have a smartphone, you can use your smartphone and that QR code that's there, and families can do this too, and when you scan that, then a video will pop up, and it's the same video that I'm going to play for you next. But if students were to choose veterinary science, they would get to diagnose a sick animal and prepare for surgery. They would learn CPR on a canine model, which you'll see in a lot of our pictures. Students who choose robotics, they can build a robot using Lego Mindstorms, and they program that robot. Virtual architecture, students use design tools to create the interior and exterior of a home using 3D CAD programs. Biomedical engineering, students will get to create plaster molds, study prosthetics, experiment with carbon fiber, and even create a model stent. Sports medicine, they'll learn to wrap an ankle and test for brain injuries, use a spineboard, one of the students' favorite activities, I think. Flight technology, students would learn the principles of flight, they'll build a rocket and launch it. They'll be able to calculate altitude and incorporate some other math concepts with that. Forensic science, they'll investigate a crime, collect fingerprints, examine fibers, and soil samples of pieces of evidence. Computer animation and graphics, students will have the opportunity to create a video using stop-motion camera. Structural engineering, students build trusses and composite beams, and then they'll test those designs on a stress test machine. And then in digital manufacturing, also a favorite among the students is using the 3D printer, where they are able to calculate cubic centimeters, and sometimes even in their projects, calculate dollars per gram of their design. So it's one thing to kind of hear about these and see them in a flyer, but it's quite another just to kind of experience those in video form. So we're going to show that to you next, and this was a video that was actually created by Mr. Dial and one of his students. So we're going to go ahead and play that for you next.
And being innovative with things. So, the competition consisted of a monthly submission and Connor had come to me with an idea and said, "Hey, Mr. Dial, check this out." And I said, "Man, that is awesome. Let's start documenting this and let's look at your faults and look at the things that you did wrong and how did you make it better? And how can we totally make this thing become what you want it to be or to engineer it to be more helpful for us?" And so, we started to chat a little bit and we pieced together a submission. And the motivation behind this is not only just the winning it, they get a hundred dollar gift card from Paxton Patterson, they also get a pizza party that's for their entire class, so the students were rooting him on the whole way, saying, "You know what, Connor, let's win this thing, do the work." And he did, he prevailed, so we got the news that he'd won and Mr. Schusler, I think is the way you pronounce it, Amanda, is that right? Nate is up in the picture here. He's the Vice President of Learning for Paxton Patterson and he drove down from Chicago with one of their marketing and media directors and got to present it to him and have a little Q&amp;A session with our class to kinda, they wanted to know, "Hey, how can we make our labs better by hearing our clay students talk to them?" So, they did make a change, actually, I noticed. He said, "Don't make the essays as long." And they shortened them up just a little bit on the writing literacy part. But anyways, they presented him with the congratulatory hundred dollar gift card, the pizza party, and I'm gonna turn this over to Connor here in just a minute. He can describe to you exactly what he did to get this achievement and we're super proud of him. It's inspired kids to actually work on more GOT grits as we go. I know Carmel Middle School just submitted one with prosthetics. I've got kids that watched Connor's project on a presentation in my room that are working on one for robotics right now and they're in high hopes to win some more money our way. And hopefully, oh, the one more thing I forgot to mention was they, every win that we get throughout the 12 months, they put us into a drawing for a new 3D printer for the lab. And so, that's nationwide. We'll see how many entries we get and see if you pull through, but congratulations. I'll let you turn it over. This is Connor, guys.
Yeah. So... Oh, yeah. Just quick. Yeah, sure. Okay. There you go. Oh, yeah. So, there's my charger. I have it right here. Call it the Curiously Strong Charger, 'cause Curiously Strong means the All Toys brand. Oh, my bad. Okay, so, my first designs were just in drawings. I first saw one of these in a video, but I figured I wanted to make it my own way and, well, here it is. And, so you just have a switch, your two amp. Well, that's actually from a car, like cigarette lighter USB charger, and then there's my nine volt connector and a nine volt battery. And then, so, there's a hole for the USB, the USB is stuck through so you can access the port. And I drilled it with, well, a drill, and drilled it, and then I used this piece of wood, pine wood behind there, so the box wouldn't cave in when I pushed the drill into it, give it more structure. To make the insulation, so the, well, since this is an aluminum box and just so the circuitry wouldn't short out with the box and it wouldn't work, so I had to put this insulation at the bottom, it's just a couple layers of construction paper. And so, yeah, I see me cutting that out and gluing it, something with circuitry. So, I used a soldering iron to connect the nine volt cap with the cigarette charger, well, the cigarette, you know what I mean, USB, and the circuit breaker, the switch. What happened? Oh, yeah, I installed it. So, simply glued it in the box carefully and, yeah. The finished product, pretty cool, works how I thought it would, charges my phone and not very well, but works and nice LED and, yeah.
Also, Miss Connor, I'll jump in with a second. He's inspired some other kids in our room to try to actually make this even a step further by putting batteries that are rechargeable in or multiple batteries to get more chargers. So, their kid's trying to top his own design, but he's created this mess. So, I tell him, I say, "You gotta keep going, keep striving forward." So, it's viral, which is good, and we enjoy seeing that, especially in the sixth grader, it's as sharp as Connor is, so we're really proud of him.
Thank you.
Thanks, Connor.
Mr. Dial?
Yes, sir.
On behalf of the Board of Education, we would like to recognize Connor this evening. Connor, we'd like to give you the November GOT Grit Contest Winner Certificate from the Board of Education, so if you'll stay right there, I'll bring it and we have some photo ops for your family. Thanks for bringing so many of your family members out this evening.
Thank you.
We really appreciate it.
Congratulations. Congratulations. Good job.
Thank you. We are so proud of Connor and the way that he has used the design process and has been able to iterate and make changes and we are just really excited to see what they might, what he might come up with next, so, and what other students will learn as a model from Connor. So, thank you. Next, we're gonna see if you have grit and that we have an activity for you this evening. And so, we're gonna go ahead and have Mr. Dial explain to you the activity for the night.
Okay, so, what we're going to do here in just a short minute, we're gonna have you guys all come down. I'll go over kinda the design brief and what we're gonna do is go through the design process and we're gonna set the environment much like if you guys were my students in my class. And you'll get to go through and have the frustrations and triumphs that our students would have in a STEM class with working and problem solving together to meet one goal. And this will be our goal. Our task is to build a bridge successfully that passes over the span of two binders. All materials will be placed out in front of you. Binders must stay in current position on your workspace. You'll have seven minutes to complete your bridge. We'll let you know when the time starts. And the supplies given, it'll be one sticky note or a Post-it note. I will give you replacements allowed upon request, but only one sticky note will be used for the final construction. You'll get one ball of clay, one pair of scissors, two binders, and one ruler. And we're to make a bridge that will span across those two binders. I would invite you guys to come on down and have a seat.
Do we have to use each piece?
Oh, Dr. Ball, you're in.
So, to also start off, there are a couple of other instructions that we will give to you now. Your, if you... Your bridge will be made of one Post-it and the clay that you see before you will need to span over 12 inches across two binders, without hitting the table or supporting them. So, you've gotta go over there to hold it between your two binders. And now, your one Post-it doorage will need to span across those binders. You and your partner can work together and play some and think through how you might want to get through.
We also have our scrap paper.
It just connects here to here, here to here, not here to the back.
Right. And there is also scrap paper, if you guys have any plans or anything. If you do happen to tear it, we'll do another one. Are you ready to begin? In three, two, one, begin.
So, this is just like...
So, this is...
So, we're doing it wrong.
No, I think you're on this. I was gonna say, I thought, oh, here, I thought.
But why would you do that?
Wait, that's got me this far.
We've got twelve inches.
Because if we have six, we're all for free.
I was gonna do it on the side.
Okay.
Okay, that sounds like a plan.
So, the bridge is going to run here and your supplies.
That's to make it look happy.
Most of the...
Is actual strategy.
Now, like just give it twelve inches.
So...
Four minutes left, four minutes.
We have another...
I have a first day.
We have four minutes.
Four minutes left, four minutes.
We have another...
I have a better design than everyone.
I should go.
This is just the initial...
Oh, I have one tonight.
Oh, play.
That's right.
Okay, there we go.
Okay.
Does the beam work and finish and make it a second wave since you have to make sure it's...
A second wave.
What?
I would need a longer...
Longer what is this thing?
Okay, so here we go.
Well, stronger, can you make more?
Okay, well, we can make it stronger by just moving these down.
You need an extra support.
You're not listening. I'm sorry.
What?
Go.
Try and catch a bad sound.
You're on the cow.
She's gonna cut it.
Guide is not going to be...
Oops.
New three, you have seven.
No, I am not.
Ours could be fourteen inches.
That is failing.
Could you cut yours in?
No, we didn't do it like that.
No, we're doing it, he's trying his own way. He's trying to put that side of the glass. That's why I picked the big glass.
Why are you laughing? Doesn't work? Doesn't work?
It's not going anywhere.
Why are you laughing? Or are you playing football over there?
It's not here.
It started, it started.
Because it's not going from here to there, it's just...
Well, I'm trying to make it stronger, it doesn't work. Well, it's worth a try.
My... We used a sticky adhesive. But we could have done that way as well. There. I used my hand. Hey, hey.
It's first round.
Hey. Well, you're so poor. Oh. I think we did a great job. I think that was good.
It's getting very green.
Yes. All right, did they grab the top?
It's trying to spin it up. Stay. It was spinning.
Pull down.
It was working.
Very good. I see a lot of materials being used, the ruler, that's something we need to do back, saying, "Well, I need to read this to the person who's supposed to know the bridge." I'll start with college experience, I had engineering class, we had to make a boat to, to cut that story short. We had to do a boat that had man motor on the backside to set across water and have it to play as fast as possible. And we did some changes, built it, well, we thought outside the box a little bit and remember with it, and built this boat very tall, off the roof of a water truck, and two of them, and one of the old ones, and the rest were the whole my lawyer, and he said, "Yeah, that's what I'm seeing." There is a way around them. I'm gonna show you guys the video, exactly what I did, it's not me, but I should take, but it's, the gentleman who came out and presented Connor's award, named Peter, he does the voice and it's in a context that's very middle school, likeable, kids love it. It's, it's got some humor into it, kinda goes through the middle schooler's mind and how attention spans, can be short sometimes, start thinking of other things while we're trying to really get through a problem. But watch the video and you can see the design process on maybe what you guys had went through and you can see some solutions to this as well. Is it the next slide? Amanda? Just click on it.
Hello and welcome to the Bridge Challenge. The objective is to build a bridge from this folder to this folder using only a Post-it note and a small ball of clay. Let's see how he does. Ah, some shaping is going on, some sort of a pillar or support has been constructed. And now, he's cutting the Post-it note into strips. The first strip is in place, now he's got it. Oops. There we go. Wait. Almost all the way, but hold on, there seems to be a problem. The strips won't cooperate, they keep falling off. And now, he's twisting, yes, he's twisting the strips together. This could be the technique to finally, but wait. Now, there's a different twisting technique. Oh, no. A timeout has been called. And now, it's back to twisting and twisting and twisting. And twisting. And now, a soccer match has broken out. Goal. Now, it's back to twisting and twisting and twisting and he has given up. That didn't go so well. Let's try that again, but this time with a bit more structure using the design process. Stage one, define the problem. Well, that's easy. We have to build a bridge from this folder to this folder using only a Post-it note and a small ball of clay. Stage two, investigate the problem. What do we know about the materials we are using? Let's start with the clay. How far will the clay reach? He's rolling it out and it looks like this is the maximum distance the clay will reach. Now, the Post-it note. He's going to use a piece of paper the same size, can't mess with the actual Post-it note, that's for the competition. And now, he's cutting it into strips. Hold on, this could be an aha moment. Yes, he's learned that the paper can be partially cut and folded. Now, it's time for stage three, develop possible solutions. He's sketching out a possible solution. He's using the folded strips to cross between the folders and the clay can be used as a support column. This could be it. The strips stay together nicely, but the end falls off the folder. Now, what's going on? Apparently, a giant lizard is breathing fire onto that idea. That's probably a bad sign. Looks like he's working on another solution to keep the strips from falling off the folder. And look, I think he's got it, the clay. Let's see how this solution looks. He's sketching the folded strips between the folders and on each side, he's using the clay to keep the strips from falling off. Stage four, select the best possible solution. Well, I definitely think this is it. And now, we're on to stage five, create a prototype. He's going to build a model using the best possible solution. He's cutting the Post-it note into strips. It's looking good so far. Now, he's folding the strips into one long piece. Is this going to work? Time for stage six, test the prototype. He's using the clay. The first end is secured in place and now, the second piece of clay. He's done it, the prototype works. Finally, we reach stage seven, evaluate and improve the design as needed. You'll notice that there's an extra strip left over. That means there's enough material to cut the strips a little wider, which would make the bridge stronger. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Looks like he's sketching an improved version, one with eight strips. Ladies and gentlemen, you have witnessed history in the making, a truly amazing design process.
All right, so we get to see, there's more than one way to go about this, obviously, but the kids kinda get it and have an aha moment when they see this, so.
And we thank you for participating this evening and joining us in the Bridge Challenge. As you can see, this is just one of many hands-on learning opportunities that we have in our new program and we're excited to have been given the opportunity to share that with you. This is one of, as I mentioned, many activities, but this one in particular is one that we use as students are introduced to the program as they start the class so that they can really learn what the design process is and what goes into it and documenting along the way as you saw Connor do in his project. So, those types of activities lead students to create and iterate. So, are there any questions for us?
First of all, thank you, Amanda Derrick E. Connor. Wonderful presentation, very excited to see how the middle school program evaluation has evolved into such a neat STEM program. The information that you shared, the flyer, had ten different courses on there. So, are those all going on simultaneously in one classroom? Are there certain ones they choose from? How does that work?
Yes, those are different choices that students can pick from. Those are the Paxton Action Labs, so all of those are happening in the classroom simultaneously. Usually, it's two students who will be paired according to their choice that they wanted to for the course. So, if I picked veterinary science and somebody in my class picked veterinary science, there might be actually several students that picked that one, so they don't always get their first choice. But we do try to accommodate as many as possible so that they can have one of their top three choices and they're paired together and they work together collaboratively through the digital content and then the digital content leads them through some hands-on learning, just like you saw here this evening.
Hi, thank you. Yes, thank you. How did you choose the company Paxton Patterson?
With our key findings that I presented earlier, if you remember, we discussed how the importance of the role of STEM in our courses and incorporating science, technology, engineering, and math. So, we looked through several programs besides Paxton Patterson and we looked to see which one matched our key findings. So, which one did a better job of incorporating those STEM subjects in the curriculum? In particular, you know, figuring out PSI and calculating PSI, incorporating that math skill with the bridge testing activity if students were to choose structural engineering. So, just taking a look at how they were incorporating those STEM topics in the context of the curriculum. Also, did they incorporate literacy? Did they incorporate some writing opportunities for students? And that was one piece that we looked at, 'cause that came out in the research when developing a program for engineering and technology at the middle level. And then, also appealing to girls. So, Paxton Patterson actually has a lot more modules to choose from, not just the ones that we picked. We had a whole menu of options and what we did was we tried to think of ones that would appeal more to girls. So, in the research, we found that girls tended to move more towards careers where they felt that they could help people in society. So, we knew that we wanted to bring in some additional choices that would appeal to girls, in particular in the health science career. So, bringing in the biomedical science and veterinary science really helped us meet those goals. But back to your question, you know, just using the evaluation tool and which one, which program best fit the needs and our look for's in our research?
Another addition to that is the LMS system that the instructors use. We looked at those different LMSs as instructors, saying, "How would we evaluate students? How can we ensure that learning is taking place and growth is taking place?" And Paxton offered a great LMS that's online-based, we can float around the room with our new laptops and sit and evaluate onsite on a very, and assess as we go and as we move amongst the room. It's virtually ten stations, eleven, I mean, it's almost like thirteen different classes running at once sometimes when they're kinda cruising around the room and assessing. It's busy, but it's very effective.
So, do they offer all of the materials that you use and all of the different modules?
Yes, the software is all onboard on the machines that the students are using. Consumables are all outfitted, the lab came with, the overall cost actually came with a year's worth of supplies and then our student cost, student fee money, we'll replenish that every single year.
Okay, that was my other question. So, it's incorporated in the student fees?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes, we do.
Are these classes offered as an electives? Do they fulfill science requirements? How do they work as far as that goes?
They are a nine-week elective that students can take. So, virtually, I think we're taking, most kids are taking it twice a year, if not once a year. If they are, I know some would like to take it four. But we want them to obviously get a taste of other things around the building as well with their electives, so.
Thank you.
Are students working in groups? So, do you just give one grade to the entire group?
No, they are, when we will evaluate, like CPR on the dog, that's something the group would get graded on together as a rubric. Everything else is all individual, the students are in charge... Everything else is all individual, um, the students are in charge of their own learning. They're taking, uh, like a checkpoint test is what we call them, about halfway through the module station and then one at the end. They're also doing their own writing assessments, um, they're also answering questions and doing quizzes along the way. And so what most students will do, if they're working with one machine, um, some, some kids will bring in a laptop or a tablet or use their phone even, um, to work alongside by side and fill in answers and questions and things like that as they go. So it's, um, they're in charge of their own learning, which is a great skill set that we really liked when we picked out this type of LMS or this type of setting. It's gonna teach them well for college and high school to be able to learn at their own pace and kind of, uh, manage their own learning.
And also since the program is web-based, students can access the digital content from home as well, which was another, uh, piece that was really appealing to us when it came to looking at different programs. Because not all programs that we saw offered that. So that was one thing that we, um, really, uh, liked with Paxton Patterson.
It updates itself as well when they send out a mass update, um, for like, um, any kind of factual information if something changes, like, I give my kids example of the Sears Tower or James Sturwitz Tower and those things. So the kids are like, what's the Sears Tower, you know, so. It stays current because we wanted something that would stay current with, with those types of things until it's ready for a complete overhaul, but it's, um, it does update and does a nice job with it.
I have to say, this is really exciting, it, it seems like such a perfect segue to the project, we've the way courses that we offered at high school. So that was really a great selection.
Yes. You said that there were fifty top, uh, jobs in the state that you're gearing them toward. Um, can you mention some, I mean, and the educational pathways, are, is that all, um, college oriented or is it, um, uh, I know it's career, I understand that. I'm trying to figure out, uh, so when they have a career, do they go through internships? Um, can they work alongside somebody that, that interests them or, um, to help them understand what they might be, uh, gearing themselves toward?
Sure, as we, uh, watched the state standards being revised, we kept our eye on that. Um, one thing that we learned in the implementation guidance from the state is that the engineering and technology program at the middle level should be an introductory course. That really opens up a lot of different options for students that they might not have known otherwise existed. So really, our goal, um, looking at that and also in our research, we really just wanted to make sure that we were, um, giving students an opportunity to explore the many different types of pathways. Because there are sixteen different career pathways, um, that are referenced. And, um, back to your question on, you know, taking a look at those Hoosier Hot Fifty jobs. That was something that we wanted to use as we chose the different, uh, topics for the action labs and for the modules. Um, we wanted to make sure that whatever company we went with, that we were really, uh, choosing some up and coming, uh, interests that would be, you know, available in our state when students, uh, would graduate in, in the years ahead. So we really wanted to align that as much as we could. It didn't always happen that way, but we definitely used that as a piece of research and helped us kind of decide which modules to choose from.
And our demographics too, we, we looked at a lot of, bringing medicine, I pushed really hard to bring medicine into this, um, because of all the companies around us, we're right here in Carmel. And a lot of, uh, kids' parents that, we work in downtown Roche and Lilly and, um, I U Health, Sacramento Health, they can relate to this. A lot of children, they're interested in what their parents are doing as careers as well.
I have one question for Connor. Do you have to go up to the mic? When you were putting your circuitry together for your VAWX, have you always been interested in circuitry? Have you done a lot with that in the past? Um, is that why you had the, the interest in doing what you're doing and had the knowledge to put that together?
Well, it's mainly been this year, I mean, I've mainly gotten this this year, I've always been interested in it, but I've really started doing stuff, um, working on stuff like that this year. Um, but yeah, I've always liked remote control things and everything like that, but yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Just want to remind everyone, we're in year two of implementation of our middle school program evaluation. And many of the points that were brought out this evening were very intentional in our middle school, um, recommendations by the committee and how we were gonna unfold this thing called middle school program. We were very mindful, we didn't want to do everything first year, we wanted to get the implementation, we wanted to get Core Plus in place and some acclamation there at the principals. And Dr. Dudley and her team have been very mindful in getting that in place for year one. While year one was going on, STEM was something that has, uh, Mrs. Hoagland reviewed, was being reviewed and half was the best way to meet the best practices that were researched by the committee. Very excited to see this coming to fruition and this report tonight and Connor's success and his classmates' success and the other, you know, two, uh, middle schools as well. But also a point that we probably don't stress enough, but we should. The articulation six twelve that Leila hit on is very, very important. We have students now in our middle schools that will be experiencing VAWX schedule comparable to what they're gonna experience when they get to Carmel High School. As well as now elective opportunities that will make them, um, better acclimated to the nine, twelve experience as well. Core Plus, student-focused, similar to SRG, uh, similar but different, but it's age-appropriate at the middle school level. The adolescent development is very clear as, uh, Mrs. Hoagland outlined. We want our kids to have exploratory opportunities in the sixth through eighth grade. This is a great example of some choice opportunities that our middle school students are having in these electives where they can be more flexible in their choice. They are working with groups, they are working individually, assessed individually, sometimes assessed as a group, which goes to the college career and life readiness skills that we're very, um, mindful of with our S D L component for life readiness skills. And I think we, we've improved our college and career readiness skills along with now these life readiness skills. All that I think we've seen on display tonight in the examples, the video and just kind of our little spiel here. The gifts and challenges, challenges and opportunities that we all have are on display every day in our middle schools. So this, this was a great presentation, but so many components really on display tonight, so it's one of that, connecting dots. Very impressed with Mr. Guile, Mrs. Hoagland and Connor. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Well, with that, meeting adjourned.